Interesting. Actually, clearly she's not here on calendar.
Oh.
She says I'm going back. I'm going out to dinner with my friends. This is good, perfect.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call it a meeting, a call to order. Sorry, we're all a little sleep deprived today, as you might have guessed. Call the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals into session for Wednesday, November 5th at 7:01 PM. Commissioner, alternate member Ryan Aronhouse will be sitting in for Commissioner Poyzon. And the Chair would like to extend congratulations to Commissioners Sweeney and Lynch on their reelection yesterday. Happy to have you guys back for two more, well, for four more years. You'll have me for two years and four for you, but congratulations on your win and as well as alternate member Judy Cleary, who was reelected as a town constable. So I want to congratulate all the members on their victories.
So will Judy still be able to sign?
Yes, yes, she'll remain an alternate. I'm not sure what her terms are, but, you know, she, they're two separate things, but, yeah. So, we got a good crew, that's good. Okay, so, let's go on to our applications. And Ms. Sweeney, you want to call item number one?
Okay. Ninety-one Browning Street, petition of ninety-one Browning Street LLC, seeking a site plan review and variance of three point five point two parenthesis C of the rear yard setback and overall building coverage and seven point five point one for the expansion of a non-conforming structure for a proposed addition for refrigeration purposes incidental to the existing commercial business in a light industrial zone. Hardship is pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay. Good evening, please just provide your name and address and describe what you're looking for.
Good evening, board. My name's Joseph Mingalalo, Mingalalo and Associate Architects. Our office is located-
Just bring your microphone up a little bit closer to you.
Sorry.
There we go.
It's Joe Mingalalo, Mingalalo and Associates, Mingalalo and Associate Architects. Our office is located at ninety Huntington Street in Shelton. I'm here with Joe Grasso, who's one of the partners and property owners here. If you have any questions about the business aspect of this waiver, this project, he's here to answer that. I'll start with the, basically, we're looking for three waivers. I'll give you a little history about the building. This is the project, this is the building as it exists today. This was had here. This building was built, for the most good part of it, back in nineteen fifty, based on the land records. And then, in nineteen eighty-two, there was a waiver to extend the back of it and all the way up to the property line, to within two feet of it. So, the setback is fifteen feet. We were encroached into that setback thirteen feet, so we're two feet from the property line. So, and that waiver was provided in nineteen eighty-two, okay? Basically, the facility manufactures, they bake, they're a baking facility, and they bake donuts and bagels, okay? They have acquired a number of other customers who are in that business, so they're going to be baking the goods here and fa- fast freezing it, or flash, what they call flash freeze. So that's going to happen here. Right now, this dotted line here is an existing freezer cooler. We're going to remove the freezer part of it and keep the cooler part. And the balance of what you see coché here in the dark, which is twenty feet by fifty five feet in this direction, will be just the flash freezer, okay? So that's basically it. So, in terms of what we're looking to do, in terms of the waivers, we're looking to expand the non-conformity, continue the back of the building as it exists now. We're on the back there, to within two feet. The side yard here is seven feet, it's five foot is the requirement. The other side is fine, nothing going on over here, and we'll find a good front yard. So that's the number one waiver, is the approachment into the rear yard, okay? Number two is really the building coverage. Fifty percent is allowed, is a five thousand square foot lot. So, max out, based on the regulation, five thousand, we're at five thousand three hundred and seventy-two. So we're looking for a waiver of three hundred and seventy-two, or three point seven percent, okay? On the coverage part. And then on the pervious area, eighty percent is maxed. We're at a hundred percent, and I don't even know if anyone's visited or gone down Browning Street, but it's about five manufacturing facilities, commercial, okay? And five buildings, and it's basically, at a butt's ninety-five, right up to ninety-five, it's a dead end, okay? And it's basically a non-impervious material, asphalt, concrete, basically property line to property line for all five buildings, okay? So, we're looking for that waiver again, twenty percent. Eighty is the max, we're at a hundred, so we're looking for twenty percent waiver. So those are the basic requirements for waivers that we're looking for. Just graphically, this is the existing building. This is right now, and the back here's, this is some couple offices, brother rooms, but here's where they bake all the donuts and bagels. And this is the existing cooler, which we're going to remain. This part of it we're removing, so that's the new flash freezer, all right? So that's pretty much it. Architecturally, elevation-wise, this is the front of the building as it exists today, and this is the addition on the side. We're looking at the front of the left side, and this is the elevation of the front of the left side of the building. So this is the existing lot building, and this is the flash freezer that we're looking to add on. I have some pictures, if you want, a couple pictures of this. Shows the front elevation, the left side, where we're doing all the work, and then the right side. So I can submit this to the zoning board if you like it.
Okay, questions from members? I had no idea we manufacture donuts and bagels in this traffic, so that's really cool to know. How long, I don't know if you had mentioned it, maybe I missed it in your remarks. How long have you owned, has this concern on the building, or the ownership on the building?
Uh, this, the, oh, okay. They purchased it, the owner purchased it in April.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and obviously, there's been no expansion, or there's no between then and now?
We're not changing the interiors at all, that's just the-
No, but there's been no expansion of the building prior to this proposal that you've been putting on of it? Has there been no changes on that?
Correct. Well, back in nineteen eighty-two-
In eighty-two?
There was a waiver, yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that's how it got close to the rear property line.
And, actually, this one looks, yeah.
Yeah, what you see on the left side here, the left side existing building, this left-hand corner, that's where it's taken place, is the addition right here. And that's what you see now. I think from a couple of points, you could see the existing, the silver box there. That's the existing freezer cooler as it is today. And what we're gonna do is basically take the dumpsters and put them on the right side. And on the site plan, we have created a dumpster pad in the right back corner, so the dumpsters will be out of sight. Couple parking spaces on that side, so it'll clean it up, too.
Okay, makes sense to me. Any other questions from members? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? If not, having no further comment, what we'll do is we'll take a procedural motion to close the public hearing. Can we have, take a motion, Mr. Carroll? Second, Mr. Aronhouse, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. We'll take up, deliberate on the proposal at our administrative session. So we just gotta go through the rest of the public hearing items, so you can just relax for a bit. Okay? Okay, let's see. Ms. Lynch, you want to call petition number two?
Eleven eighty-two North Ave, petition of Casa Bianca LLC, seeking a site plan review and variances of three point two one C of both the side yards and front yards setback requirements, and seven point five point one for the expansion of a non-conforming structure for a proposed second-floor addition over the existing footprint of a single-family dwelling in an RS-four zone. Hardship pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure.
Evening, ma'am. Just give us your name and address and what your proposal is.
My name is Alexandra Casa Bianca, sole member of Casa Bianca LLC. I'm thirteen sixty-two Huntington Turnpike in Tromble, Connecticut.
Okay.
And I'm just looking for an expansion, a vertical expansion on the current footprint on the existing non-conformant, non-conforming structure in the existing non-conforming lot of this property. So we're not going to go away, we're just going to go up, if you guys- Basically, seeking one point four foot front variance, six point foot on the right side, and the left side, one point one foot variance.
Okay. So, Casa Bianca, is that, how is that related to the house? So it's not, so-
Owner.
So this entity owns the house itself?
Yes.
As opposed to a private owner?
Correct.
Okay, and you rent out the-
I am remodeling and I'm hopefully gonna give it to my daughter, sell it to my daughter.
Okay. And it was eighteen ninety construction?
Yes.
Interesting, interesting.
With surprises, too.
Okay, questions from members? Okay. Uh, let's see here. And how long have you owned it?
I bought it this year.
This year?
Yes.
And I think then the, the rest of the neighborhood are mostly second-floor or two-floor houses. Would that be correct?
Yes, there's a kind of like a second floor, very low, very inconvenient. The highest part is this high.
Oh, like that, yeah.
So it has to be fixed, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, worms like that, and old-fashioned houses, yeah.
Yes.
Any further questions from members? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Again, what we'll do is we'll close this portion of the public hearing, and we will deliberate the petition during our administrative session, which will be starting shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to close, Mr. Carroll, second, Ms. Lynch, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously, and-
Thank you.
Mr. Aronhouse, you want to do number, call petition number three?
Sure. Two-five-six Lordship Road, petition of Cindy Garcia Diego, seeking a site plan review and variances of section three point two point one C of the front and side yard setback requirements. Section four point four point two E one-one A of the minimum lot area for a detached accessory dwelling unit, and section seven point five point one for the expansion of a non-conforming structure for a proposed second-floor addition over the existing footprint of a single-family dwelling in an RS-four zone. Hardship pre-existing non-conforming lot and structure.
Okay, good evening. Just give us your name and address and your proposal.
My name is Cindy Garcia Diego. Address is four forty-seven Glenbrook Road, Stanford, Connecticut. I am here in discussion of two fifty-six Lordship. The property in question was built in nineteen thirty. It sits on a point fifteen acres, six thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet. It is a non-conforming corner lot and structure, which does not leave ownership with many options with existing setbacks. The project consists of full renovation to the interior, including left and right dormers. Now, I have to say that the, there was permits on the property, but approval was not given for said dormers.
Okay.
There's a front porch, a front, front second-floor balcony, proposed rear deck to existing single-family home, and rebuilding the two-car garage that was taken down without a permit. In addition to that, they would like to have an ADU attached to said garage.
They would like to have a what?
An ADU.
Oh, accessory dwelling unit, okay.
Five hundred and sixty square, forty, forty square feet. And will be, both will be owner-occupied.
Um, is that within our purview, or is that the ADU, or does that have to go to regular zoning?
We're, we've put in application, sorry.
Yeah, no, see, so they did submit an application for both a coastal site plan review and administrative site plan approval through the zoning commission.
Okay.
Any ADU requires zoning commission approval-
Mm-hmm.
-if it complies with all of our regulations. In this case, the ADU itself does not comply, because one of the requirements is that the property needs to meet the minimum lot area. This property is below the seventy, I believe it was seventy-five hundred square feet. So it would need a variance approval in order to move forward for the administrative approval through the zoning commission.
Okay, so we would have to act on this before the zoning commission acts on it?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if everybody got that. Okay, sorry, just want to make sure we understand the procedure and what's in our jurisdiction and what isn't. So that's the reason I was just asking that question. Okay. Continue.
Yeah, the owners are aware that this is gonna go through two other variances. What else? So that is all.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Well-
Oh, sorry.
The property does have a existing stop-work order. The work started in May, May twentieth of this year, and they were stopped because of the nonapproval of the dormers, as well as the takedown of the existing two-car garage.
Okay. So, if you don't mind me asking, just to make sure this, I'm clear with the town attorneys. So, so the work began without the approval. It sounded out of cease and desist order, and that's, I guess, pending our action? Or, I'm trying to separate the issues here to make sure I understand what we were doing.
So initially, we went out, myself and the building department went out-
Okay.
...and issued a verbal stop-work order.
Okay.
Soon after, the applicant in front of us was hired to put a ZBA package together for the owner.
Okay.
Since then, the, the work has stopped. The interior of the home was gutted, they started reframing. There were a dormer addition on each side of the home, one, as you can see, close to the property line, which requires the variance for the expansion there.
Mm-hmm.
A front porch was put on at one point that encroached beyond the front setback,
Mm-hmm.
was removed and replaced, and now it still needs the variance for the side setback.
Okay.
A demo permit was required for the removal of the garage, which was not taken out prior to the demolition of it.
Okay.
So the work has basically ceased-
Mm-hmm.
-till either, either the proposed variances are approved-
Mm-hmm.
-or their plan is modified.
Okay. Okay. All members have any further questions on that? Just to make sure we understand the procedural history here? Mr. Carroll? Just put your microphone.
The construction has a ways to go, 'cause there's some issues structurally that was done by the contractor hired by the owner. So, working with the architect, he's about eighty percent done with his plan. For structural, I actually have a structural plan now. Waiting for the full construction detailed plan from the architect. So we're ready to submit the structural to building to allow us to continue with the permits we do have in place and/or change the verbiage for just the main house.
So it's unclear whether what has been done to this point will remain or have to be dismantled anyway.
It seems like the whole second floor, well, they're trying to save the whole entire second floor, but it looks like they may save the roof and its cables. But, yeah, there's some structural issues there that we're working with the architect and engineer on how to fix them.
Thank you.
From the, from the site plan, the dormers are facing the neighboring house?
So this is street-side Lordship. The left dormer is encroaching on the left neighbor's driveway, within that setback. And on the right side, it's not encroaching, but the front porch hasn't been constructed, but the footings were put in place.
So the structural, you didn't get a clearance of it being secure to go demolish when you were demolishing it?
Well, he, he didn't demolish the whole second floor, they did the dormers. So they pushed it out, 'cause it was really pitched, you know, really deep pitched.
Yes.
So it opened up to add the closet and had room for the bedroom. Based on my findings when I came through.
But is it safe now? Did you get clearance?
Yes, it's, it's safe, it just was not done properly.
Properly, okay.
They used two-by-fours instead of two-by-eights.
Eights, okay.
So, yeah, the load points are the issue.
And it, it should be noted that the, the home is gutted, there's nobody living there-
Yes.
-at the moment.
It's completely to gut.
And that's where, are the dormers, those window dormers, or are they solid?
Solid. There's one that's on the right-hand side that has a window, but they're gonna seal that window. 'Cause you can't have a window right in front of the attachment point, the electrical attachment.
So looking at the plan, essentially, by expanding those dormers, it created a two-story home.
Yes. I think it was one and three quarters before.
So the, um, oh, I see how you did it, okay. So the, the new garage will be on the same footprint as the now demolished garage, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now I understand. I'm just- With the addition of the accessory in between the two buildings?
Yeah, it would be on the full, the two-car garage with the ADU closer to the dwelling.
Okay, okay, sounds good. The building itself, I think you might have mentioned nineteen thirty?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay, thank you. Okay. And, okay. And any other questions from members? Any other questions from staff regarding?
I would just like to maybe make a recommendation that, in my opinion, I think the board should consider this in almost two phases.
Mm-hmm.
You have one, the pre-existing non-conforming house,
Mm-hmm.
which isn't, except for the porch, the footprint's not changing, it's a vertical addition.
Right.
The proposed garage, let's say, without the accessory dwelling unit, is permitted as a break. They, they would just need a building permit.
Okay.
The accessory dwelling unit, due to the fact that we have a regulation that in order to have an ADU on your property, you need to comply with the minimum square footage for that zone. This property lacks it. So I would try to balance those two issues while making your decision.
Okay. On the accessory building, would that be getting sanitation and water from the existing structure or from the street?
It's a good question. It, it does need its own hookups as per our regulations. We don't have a requirement, whether it's from the home or from the street. It's typically, engineering would make that decision. And due to the fact that this property is located within our coastal area management jurisdiction zone, it's required to be sent up to deep for the review as well, prior to the zoning commission voting on it, whether it, if it gets that far.
So I guess my question would be kind of, what's the delineation between, do we have two separate dwellings on one piece of property? Or is it because they're not attached?
Right, yes, essentially, yes. That's what, that's what it would be. And since our change of regulations in January, we do now allow detached accessory dwelling units.
Can I add to that, Mr. Carroll?
Sure.
There was an existing electrical and water running in that two-car garage originally, before it was taken down. So I would assume it's from the, it is from the main house.
Okay. All right, any other further questions from members? Okay, thank you very much. Any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Chamber of Stand at East, Mr. Florak, just for a quick second. Okay, members, I just asked the town attorney, because as you know, we have the, the last step in the public hearing process is to close the public hearing. And once we've closed the public hearing, essentially, we have to evaluate the- once we've closed the public hearing, essentially, we have to evaluate the petition on, um, on its merits, and we can't take addition, we can only take limited additional answers. Um, there's some complexity with this one. Um, and I just wanted to get your opinion. Do you think that you would need, would want the opportunity for the town attorney to, um, lay out the issues or clear, clarify it so that we can actually, because it's gonna be a multi-part petition, um, would, would that be something that you'd be interested in, and we can take it up at our December meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I think we have a consensus. Yeah, I think we would appreciate guidance on the, the ADU situation, understand what the, what the legal situation there is, um, and just give us a chance, probably need a little bit more time to understand exactly how that fits with the application and some of the complexity in here. Remember, we don't want to delay this any more than it has. We appreciate, uh, you know, the situation and know it's getting later in the year for construction, but I think we, I think just getting, I think you suggested just briefing this a little bit better for us would, I think, would be very helpful. Okay? So I think procedurally, I think we want to continue this to the next meeting?
Yeah, I would, I would simply table the application, table the public hearing until the December meeting.
The one thing I would like to ask the board is if, um, if the board would be okay with our department issuing a permit for the interior work that does comply as of right now, um, so they can move along with the stuff that I can permit legally.
Okay, I think we would probably take that up as an administrative item.
Correct.
Um, just because we can't vote during a public hearing, I don't think?
Yeah, I mean, if you were gonna do it, I would do it during the administrative session.
Yeah.
But if, if the zoning enforcement officers of the opinion that they don't need the variances to do certain work, you guys wouldn't even need to, to vote on it, in my opinion.
Okay.
Um, if you could, if you wanted to.
Uh, I'm talking about interior sheet rock on the first floor, putting floors in, maybe putting their plumbing and electrical, getting that ran.
And any winterization, obviously.
Right, right, right now, it's kind of just pretty open to that one.
Okay, I guess maybe we'll just, I'll try your minds. Any objection to, uh, proceeding as the?
No.
Can you see administrator head? Yep, okay.
Right.
Okay. All right, in that case, let me just ask for a motion to table this and continue the public hearing until the December ZBA meeting. Mr. Herron, uh, Herron House, second, Mr. Carroll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, there's a number of issues, uh, that Dan's identified and I've identified, so we'll try to come back in December with more clarity for you guys on them.
Okay.
And we'll try to have it for the applicant as well. I mean, the applicant will have the opportunity in December to respond.
Right, and that's, that's part of the, the reasoning of the continuing, so that when you have that, they have an opportunity to address any points that you made and provide any clarification. We have a chance to ask questions the same way we would do that.
Sure.
So, okay. I think that'll work for everybody. Okay. All right, with that in mind, we'll take a motion to conclude the public hearing. Yep. By Ms. Weely, second, Mr. Carroll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. That means our public hearing is concluded at seven thirty-three PM, and we will move into our admin session. Let me just shift over and get my right agenda in front of me. Sorry. Way too much paper. And I know we'll start with our, here we go. Items on the agenda, so let's take up, what's the first one, Browning? Let's take up ninety-one Browning Street. Motion to take off the table by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Ms. Weely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. And what's your preference? Or take a motion to approve? Let's begin discuss. Mr. Carroll? Okay. Is it a motion by Mr. Carroll to approve? Is there a second? Ms. Lynch? Okay, been moved and seconded. We can begin discussion. Who wants donuts?
Well, the ninety-one Browning Street, um, LLC, I mean, it was built in nineteen fifty. Um, then in nineteen eighty-two, they did receive a waiver to extend the back. Um, it is also close to the property line, as well as he's just asking to remove the freezer, uh, where it's, um, it will be a, a two-foot setback where fifteen foot is required, uh, for his freezer to be removed. And, uh, he stated that they are, have five buildings on that dead-end street, uh, which, uh, you know, no one is there walking around. It's just business, and they're going to be baking facility, which is baking bagels and donuts, uh, which will be enlightened in Stratford to have, uh, something new as well. And, uh, that's what I, I, I got.
Yeah, the, uh, building nineteen fifty, it's in an industrial area. Apparently, it's very similar to what goes on in the, um, district. Seems like it's the minimum variance required for the hardship, um, and they were not the owner at the time that, uh, the earlier work was done, apparently.
I think I have a question, is the three point seven percent over area coverage?
Yes.
Correct, correct.
Yes, right here.
And, and it is interesting, that regulation that is in there, that, that it's, actually, I don't know if we've, we've encountered this regulation before, that says if it does not confirm to use standards for the zone in which it's situated, shall not be enlarged, um, for this, including the use for the zone in which it was situated. And I'm assuming that, actually, Mr. Florak, maybe you can answer this one. This is a legal question. So because of that regulation, seven point five, we're still entitled to grant a variance, even though it, the, um, that reg seems to almost preclude us from doing it, right?
Give me one, one second here, Mr. Chairman.
Okey-dokey. Sorry. Everything seems so easy tonight, huh?
I know, I thought I was getting off easy.
Yeah, sorry about that.
High five. So the question is, can you, can you grant a variance as per regulation? Yes, you can.
Yes, we can.
You are statutorily empowered as the zoning board of appeals to grant such a waiver.
I kind of thought so, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay. State statutes and zoning regulations, gallo. Yep.
It is a sort of a strange regulation.
Yeah, it seems to, almost like it, it binds you, but it's, you can't.
Sure, but the, the zoning regulation legally could not bind the statutory authority of this board, so you can, you can grant a variance.
It's inconsistent with state statute.
That's right. Well, it could be, if you interpreted it to not allow you to grant such a variance, but I think it does.
Very good. Appreciate that. With that in mind, uh, I have no objection to approving this. It seems like, um, this is very much in harmony with the work that they're doing there. Um, will not have any adverse impacts on the, on the, um, neighborhood, minimum necessary to relieve the hardship. Essentially, they're working on that cooler and freezer area, so, um, and predate zoning. So I think this is a clear, easy one to pass. I'll be voting in favor. Any other comments? Okay. If not, we'll take a vote. Mr. Herron House.
Approved.
Ms. Weely.
Approved.
Ms. Lynch.
Approved.
Mr. Carroll.
Approved.
And chair votes yes, so the a's are five, the n's are zero, and the variance is approved. Okay, let's go on to eleven eighty-two North Avenue. Uh, want to take a motion to take it off the table?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll, second, Ms. Lynch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Uh, anybody want to make a motion to approve? By Mr. Herron House. Is there a second? By Ms. Lynch. Uh, motion has been made and seconded. We can now discuss.
Well, well, the eleven eighty-two North Casablanca LLC, the owner, um, does want to extend a single-family dwelling in RS-four zone. It was built in eighteen ninety, but the owner purchased it this year, in twenty twenty-five. What she's asking is just to build up, um, the single-family dwelling, so it's not interfering with the neighbors at all. Um, I mean, it's just going upwards, and that's what she's asking for. She's not doing any harm to the neighbors or any such nature.
Mm-hmm.
The variances, I mean, the home is old. I wasn't born then, you know?
My grandmother wasn't born then.
I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's something I would have done.
And my great-grandfather was seven.
Yeah. So I basically think, um, yes, it's, it's necessary to remodel and develop this home in a better interior as well, and to sell it to her daughter to live in and to continue the home, um, property.
Yeah, the, um, again, very clearly predates, uh, zoning. Uh, this property is compliant with the dimensional standards. The dwelling does not conform, um, and any, making it comply would be, uh, very difficult. Um, as Commissioner mentioned, uh, minimum, it's an upward change, minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship. Um, they've only owned it for a little while, um, this year, I believe they said.
Yes, this year.
And, um, it looks like it's consistent with the other parcels in the neighborhood, so I don't see any problem with approving this petition, so I'll be voting yes.
Yes.
Further comments, questions?
That's a little, a little close in the back corner there, the three point eight feet, but if the adjoining neighborhood appears to be opposed to it, does it represent itself as such?
They've never made any comments that we know of. Okay. All right, we'll go to a vote. Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
Ms. Weely?
Approve.
Mr. Herron House?
Approve.
And the chair votes yes, the a's are fives, the n's are zero, and the variance is approved. Okay, moving on. The approval of minutes from our October seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. And I believe those were shared, if I can find them. Ah, here we go. Um, I know I had asked for a change. Let me see, did you make it? You did make the change?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take your word for that.
It was revised.
Right.
I don't think I sent it to the other members.
Oh, okay.
But it's on the, on website with the change.
Let me just make sure we have the right one here. I voted no, yes, yes, four to one. Okay, yes, yes, yes. And I think we got it. Orin Oak Lane, hold on. Three, two.
Actually, there was only that vote plus, I had to, Ms., Ms.
Oh, yeah. Okay, there was just a, a question initially, the initial version of the draft had one of my votes, um, um, just recorded incorrectly, and I'm just making sure we have the right one. So motion failed, three, two. No, no, yes, yes, no. Okay, I think we got that correctly. Okay, very good. Uh, any other question? Oh, amended for typo, jeez. Uh, any other question, changes to the minutes of the meeting? Mr. Carroll?
The Orin Oak Lane, we ended up denying.
The last part of what you said, reduce.
Just use your, uh, use your microphone, Ken.
He has to reduce the height of the fence down to the four feet that's required.
Yep. Okay. All right, any further comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Any campsite reviews?
None.
Okay, any sediment or erosion control?
Nope.
Any members have concerns?
No.
Okay. Okay, in your packet, you probably noticed, we have the, um, twenty twenty-six schedule.
Yes.
Yep, we are required to actually adopt it ahead of time so it can be posted. Uh, it follows the exact same schedule that, um, we, um, have usually followed, which is a, a monthly meeting. Uh, obviously, if we have a slow period in the summer, or if there's no, uh, no petitions, we'll cancel, but we would have an organizational meeting on January sixth, um, and that would be with, um, uh, the regular members and, um, Commissioner-elect, Mr. Schlegler, would be the new member for District Five and Six. And then, uh, the only change is on November the fourth, um, that we move to a Wednesday since it's the election day, and chamber's in use, so we would just go off to that Wednesday. So, and I would just need a motion to approve from the board.
Approve.
Mr. Carroll? Ms. Lynch, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. All right. Um, and speaking of, uh, scheduling, um, we were just discussing before, um, our next meeting is Tuesday, December second. Um, I actually have a conflict that I'd kind of like to be at. It's not the end of the world if I don't. And I was asking if it would be possible for us to, to move our meeting to, um, Wednesday, December third, but we'd have to see if the council chamber was available for that. Um, if it is, I'm not sure how that works for everybody else's calendar. Would send an email out to you just to confirm attendance.
Yeah.
Um, if we don't, can't get it, it's gonna get too complicated, then it's okay. I'll just make sure that I'm here for that meeting.
Should be fine.
Should be good. All right, we'll, we'll figure that out. Dan and I will talk, and that is our final meeting of the year. Last time around, we tried, and I forget what circumstances prevented it. Uh, maybe have a little bit of social get-together afterwards, you know, for our last meeting of the year. Um, so more details on that as, as we, as we get it, and, uh, hopefully that'll work out. Um, so, any other items before the board, before we adjourn? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Weely, second, Mr. Carroll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We're out of here at seven forty-eight, and everybody have a great Thanksgiving, and we'll see you in December.
That's my birthday.
It's your birthday, Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Oh, wow. You'll have cake with your turkey.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, have a good month.
Yes, every four years.